November 3rd, 2021, meeting of the Culture, Education and Youth Services Committee meeting. And I just want to welcome everybody. We're basically starting fresh, as we all know. I did send an email out that had the agenda and, excuse me. Yes, that's better. The agenda and some of our past, past agendas over the last, I guess, year and a half. As everybody knows, I am the new chair, so there's a lot, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of questions and hopefully we'll be paving a new path. And I'm hoping that everybody that is here today has the same passion for the goals that we'd like to have, which is to address the current Board of Education, what's being taught in our schools, also local issues. But what I want to put out to a lot of the new members is I just want to hear from each person that is here as a board member, as a committee member, before we actually speak to the public, is just to introduce yourselves and why you want to be in this committee? And also, what are, what are your goals that you would like to see? What is your current opinion and the goals you would like to see for the Bronx, Bronx Education with our children? So I'll start with you, Tiz.
Hello, my name is Tiz or Phyllis, either one I answer to, Nostasio. I am new on the committee, I'm new on the board. I'm a teacher, so this was the perfect fit for me as far as committees go. I've been a teacher for 20 years at St. Francis Xavier in the Bronx, right on Morris Park. And I just want, things need to be better for our kids. Our kids don't have anything in our community. We have no community centers, the after-school programs are terrible. They, we need to do better for our kids.
Amen. Thank you, Phyllis. Okay, so Natalie, can you give us your full name and same, what is your, you know, why are you here and what are you, what are you looking for?
If I can start my video there, hi.
There you go, hi.
Hello, this is Natalie. I've been a board member now for a couple of years. I lived in Morris Park now for four years or so. And I joined the Education Committee. I have a three-year-old, now, well, almost three-year-old, who will be, you know, she is our future and I want to make sure that I haven't been super involved in the education and services that are for the youth in our community. But I've always been super interested in schools and and what, I guess, what we can offer for our youth. So I just, I wanted to be part of this committee just to be more aware and see where my skill set can be applied. Really, I am an architect and I think I bring a different kind of more, a different kind of way of thinking.
Can I hear you?
Did you guys lose me there for a while?
Yes.
Well, let's, let's, let's wrap it up. I am here, I want to be, I want to be involved and I want to see how we can, you know, make things better for, for everyone in the community and especially our youth for our future.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so how about, thank you Natalie, how about Patty? Can you unmute yourself and? There you go. Oh, I'm sorry, unmute yourself, I was doing it for you.
Go, okay, hello, I'm here now.
Okay, fine, good.
Yes, hi, my name is Patty DeJesus and I'm, I'm just sitting in on the meetings, like most of them, to see where, you know, I can fit in, the education, you know, and the youth part is what interests me, working with the young people.
Okay.
So that's why I, I came to the meeting tonight to see, you know, how things go and what you guys do.
All right, very good. All right, well, oh, I got an echo, sorry.
Okay.
All right, thank you Patty. Charlene, I'm going to ask you to speak also.
Oh, okay, so my name is Charlene Jackson-Mendez and I think I've been a resident of the Bronx for 32 years and a homeowner in the Bronx for 11. And I have four children and two grandchildren. And so I feel in my efforts to, I've worked all my life helping people and communities in various capacities. And I know that education and whether you have a quality education or not, really significantly impacts how well you will be able to do in the United States of America. And we often hear from politicians and various people about, you know, how the Bronx is the last in a variety of different barometers of health or economics or so on and so forth. And all of that is tied to education. And I just feel as if a lot of times, we are not, we're blaming, and I guess the number one thing to say nowadays, it's always either systemic racism or there's not enough money, more money for the schools, more money for the schools. But when I actually study these things formally, I really feel as if there's a breakdown in the education of teachers. What are they being taught and how are they being trained to be effective teachers for the students that they serve? And then, lastly, we see, you know, over and over that in many cases, for example, the Catholic schools are able to do a better job with less money being spent per pupil. So I just feel that we need to advocate for high-quality education, period. And really begin to use good research and feedback from successful teachers to determine how we can provide a better quality of education for our children. And I think if we were to able, if we were able the quality of education in the Bronx for children in the next couple of decades, a lot of our stats would improve. Because education is related to so much. So that's kind of what I'm interested in.
Okay, thank you Charlene. I just want to let everybody know as, as a guest, Charlene is a guest, Charlene is not on the community board, but usually we have the committee people speak first, but since we are a small group, I just felt that it's good for all of us to be able to speak. But usually, the usual procedure, just a little bit about me. I've been on the Youth and Education Committee since my first time on the board and I've been on board since 2008. When I was working in Manhattan, it was just very hard for me to get to all of the committees I would like to get to. But I also felt that there was a need and a focus on our future, which is our children and the quality of education. So I always, if there was only one committee that I can get to with a meeting besides our full board meetings, it would be the Youth and Education Committee. And Diane Norris and Linda White, which Linda White was the chair and Diane was a co-chair and they have been the chair and co-chair with me for my whole time that I was on the committee and that's big, big shoes for me to fill and, but I'm hoping that I will honor them in a way and take things to a different plateau. But they were resources of information that hopefully I will be able to gather some of their notes in the past and bring that to light. But they were just, had a plethora of resources, information and experience, so I'm, you know, I, I'm hoping I can honor their legacy. In the past, the Youth and Education Committee, the one thing that is done every year and most of the, and most everybody here should know about it is the Yankee Youth, the Youth Yankee Leadership Awards. Presently, we are, our deadline to submit is closed. We do have six nominees. And I will be looking them over. I basically have to, I really do want to look them over before I give them out to the rest of the committee. And from those, we will pick five. What I want the committee to remember is that the child obviously has to have the criteria, of the age criteria. But even if they do not live in Community Board 11, if they go to school and their volunteer work and community work is within the boundaries of Community Board 11, they can be accepted as a nominee. So those are the two criterias. And I will, I will be going through the six applications and then I will be giving them out to the committee and then we will discuss that going forward. Okay, we do, we are not going to be making decisions on the nominees tonight. The deadline was just to get them in so that we could start looking at them. And that's really important because what we want to do is we want to plant seeds of leadership, community importance, interest in civic, local civic associations and the local government. And bringing also that to their school, to their classroom, leadership in the classroom, leadership in different things that they're doing in school, for the school, for the community. It's just planting and watering those seeds. And we've had quite a few nominees over the last, well, since I have been in the Youth and Education Committee. And after they are accepted, the following year, which in our case will be 2022, they are given the awards on the mound of the, of the Yankee, the Yankee, at the Yankee, whatever you call, I'm sorry, at the stadium. And they are allowed, they're, you know, they are, I guess, they're, it, it's a real honor, it's really great. And they are, they stay for the rest of the game, if they choose to. So it's great and they, each child is given $750 that they can choose to use however they want. It does not have to be for school or books or anything, there are no strings tied to it. So each child does get the $750 awarded to them. And this is all given to each community board through the Yankees. So it's, I, my, my son was very excited when he got his. And I know a lot of the others ones that were chosen. It's, it's good seeds to plant and getting the money is wonderful, so. Okay, so that's one of the things we will be doing in this committee. The other things I want to point out is, we, I do want to share the last minutes. I did go and Jeremy assisted me through a lot of the past agendas. There is one, one of the last meetings, I think it was January 5th of 2021. Jeremy is going to look for the video so that we can look and listen to that because that was, I just went over the minutes of that meeting. And it's, I think it was, well, no, I take that back. I, that particular meeting was the last one recorded and I'd like for everybody to see that. So at some point when I do receive it, I will send it out to everybody, they can see it at their leisure. But the one thing we do at the meeting is that we do take minutes, okay? I want to bring it out to everybody. If, if one person wants to take minutes, if we would do a round robin. So if one person, maybe Natalie would take it one time, Tiz would take it another time and any of the other committee people that hopefully will jump in if Patty decides to stay. And it would be a round robin. And then you could also view the WebEx and take from there to enhance your notes and that gets submitted and that gets brought to the community board and the minutes get distributed. And I was looking over our, the last minutes, which, which were March. I'm going to share with my screen, I think I have it up here. The last minutes would, of January, of March, let's see, where is that? Where's my March meeting? It's actually March 3rd, 2020, believe it or not. And I remember that meeting. We had a guest speaker from the Public Library, which we do have from the different libraries because they have all, the, the public libraries within our community and I think everybody will agree, they act as a community center, unfortunately, because they are overwhelmed. Their love for the children and the after-school programs are are wonderful, but they are not set up to be a community center. Which they do agree. And they are, if you look at their calendar, there is something there every day from the afternoon until the evening. And it, it's amazing. And we are fortunate to have the Morris Park Library. We have the Allerton Library, we've got the Barnes Van Ness Library. And they do have a lot of, a lot of great programs, but they are not a community center. So, and they're not babysitters either, which they have issues with that, with the after-school children. So they have been guest speakers. I sort of like to hear from everybody. I know, I know who I would like to have as a guest speaker. At least I know there are two, two guest speakers I would like to, to have at our meeting. And one of them is Christine Vaughan, which is the Superintendent of Schools. I would like to get her to be a guest speaker. And also what I would like to bring back is CEC 11 President, which is Cheryl Smith. And I think the last time that she was here, also Vicky, Vicky, I forgot what her last name was, but she is either Vice President of CEC 11 or the Executive Secretary. But the two of them also as guest speakers. I'd just like to hear, is, if there are any other guest speakers that we might be able to seek out the coming months? So you can unmute yourself and throw out some suggestions? Anybody?
Well, I know there's been an ongoing issue with 108 with, parents want the middle school put in, the principal and the staff does not, do not want the middle school put in. So maybe we can get somebody from 108 to come on and tell us why?
Yeah. Okay, well, I actually went to the meeting last year. I was invited to the meeting with the superintendent, Vinnie Marie, which is the head, the head person. She was at our meeting last year also. Or maybe the last one in January, whichever one it was. And I think last year she had invited me to express the different, I guess to express the things that are, that are needed or that we are also looking for. So there, I have to get a follow-up from her, so yeah, she would be really good to have as a guest speaker.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I think that the principal had said that the construction that was going there was not a middle school.
Right. It was just expanding the current school.
Yeah, but expanding it in how and what way? And why are they, why are they not interested in the middle school? This is where Christine Vaughan would come in to play. And also CEC 11 has been brought, you know, it has been expressed that, we, you know, we can't get, it seems to get the elected officials behind this. For some reason, they're like, yes, we are owed 3,000 middle school seats. And that's growing. I mean, what are they waiting for and why is that not important? And why is the focus on homeless shelters and not middle schools?
Right.
So it's like, the city can have that money for that, but you know, this is something that's been decades has been needed, so. So yeah, so having Vinnie Marie as and whoever she wants to come with her as a, as a guest speaker, I agree. That's, that's something that is ongoing and I have not heard from her over the summer. I thought, but I, I did not touch base with her either, so I'm very curious about that. Because I think there was supposed to be a groundbreaking in June, so I don't know.
I don't think anything's happened.
Yeah, I think it's sort of, it's holding, it's just in a holding pattern. Are there any other guest speakers that we might, might have?
You know, I, I'm, I don't know if I can do this because I'm not on the committee.
You're not supposed to, but I, I will, yeah, I will allow.
Remind me of the rules.
Yeah, if we're voting on anything, you, you, you're, you're the gall of your session.
Right.
But, but yes, please speak up.
I, I just was thinking that, well, a couple of things, just to make it more understandable like what the committee is for and how it works and then so that I could have a sense of how parents and members of the community can participate. But what I think might be a really good idea is to maybe have like one session of this committee, have a meet and greet for all of the principals that are leaders in schools within CB 11 and maybe just have a night that's for a meet and greet and each principal could be given, I don't know what's reasonable according to time, to talk about their school and what their goals are and how they feel parents can be involved or other concerned members of the community. So that
Okay.
You know, like more of a sense of a coordinated effort.
Over the, over the years, we have had different principals from the different schools. From Van Ness Academy, from the Icon School, from PS 83. We didn't have it from, you know, we have, we also had Ms. Rojas from PS 41. So I think that I will try to, if I cannot get more than one or two to the meeting, we can work on getting as many principals as we possibly can to each meeting. It would be great to be able to get a lot of them all together, but I think that's wishful thinking, will people schedule?
Can we include the Catholic schools in that?
Yes, yes, yes. Oh, you know me, yes, I will.
But I think if you, if they each only had, let's say, three minutes or five minutes and they could sign up for the time they, you know, can present, then maybe they would be willing to do that. Because I don't know the philosophy of the Board of Ed now and what they encourage the principals to do or not do. But if you're invited by the community board to give three minutes of your time and you, you say, no, that's not quite a good look. If you have a community board that's active and engaging parents, that's, I think that's considered a part of their role as a public school principal.
A community outreach.
To the community, yes.
Yes, so I, what I, what I am going to do is I will, I will reach out to the, the present, the present schools and the principals and try to get about two or three, maybe four, to, to each one of our meetings and try to set up from next month to the end of the year and see if we can get all our, our guest speakers lined up. The other, the other, the other guest speaker that I think might be good is the new Board of Education Chancellor. Would be another guest, good guest speaker. So I will work, I will work on getting those guest speakers because I think that is very, very important. And what are the things that it's President of the Van Ness Neighborhood Alliance and Charlene, who is the Vice President of the Van Ness Neighborhood Alliance, we've talked about is working on connecting with all the principals within our location. So we'll, we'll have that as one of our goals. I just think, they also need to know that the community board is interested. We'd like to hear what they're doing. We'd like to get feedback from them on their pros and cons about curriculum. How they want to see improvement, what goals that they've reached and so on and so forth. And whoever becomes our guest speaker, we should have our list of questions ready. So we could also start coming up with specific questions that we would like to ask. Okay, good. Is there anybody else that has any ideas for guest speakers? Patty, if you have any idea? Natalie? Okay, let's move on. If you think of anything later on, please feel free to email me. And then I will share with everybody. I'd like to, I'm a, I'm a big email person and a group, group person. So if there are things happening, I will send it out to everybody so that everybody stays within a, a line of communication. So if you don't want to respond to my emails, you don't have to, just know that you might be on the email, email blast list for our group. One of the other things is another, one of the guest speakers that I think might be really good is going to the different schools and getting the parent coordinators or the PTA presidents of each one of the schools. And seeing if they could also be a guest speaker. And is everybody familiar with CEC 11 meetings?
No.
Okay. CEC 11 is our district, our school district, which is, is huge, okay? I've, I've been to a few of their CEC 11 meetings. In fact, Diane Norris always said, you know, Burn, you gotta get to the CEC 11 meetings. Get to know the new president, you know, Cheryl Smith is wonderful. She, I was there when there was another president, but Cheryl Smith was always on the board. They also have a breakfast every year. I think it was in 2019, I was invited to their breakfast through Diane Norris. And it's all about education. It's all, you know, unfortunately, it's with the public school system, which I feel that it should be really connected throughout all of the schools in our, you know, in our, in our Community Board 11 district. But and it was just quite interesting because they vote on a lot of different things and sometimes it's just good to get to the meeting and see what goes on there. They, and if you Google, it's, it's, it's CEC 11. I will send the link to everybody so that you can get onto their website and just see when their calendar of meetings are. And as a member of this, you could bring that information back. A lot of times, some, we can't get to that meeting, but maybe, you know, whoever could show up would be great. And it's just, it's, it's seeing a bigger picture. Just like anything else, like you have the, the local civic, civic organizations and then you have Community Board 11. And then you have CEC 11 when it comes to education. So it's just broadening our horizons. And like I said, I, I will get them to be And like I said, I, I will get them to be uh, guest speakers because they could just give, you know, why they are formed, what they do, what their goals have been, what their goals they're striving for. And then we could ask our questions. So. Um, so there, there's a lot that has to be done in the current climate with our curriculums with school. I, I, I know that we have to pray a lot, but um, there needs to be a way of connecting with all of the schools. What their feelings are with the present push with, you know, critical race theory. Um, I was just talking to somebody this afternoon who was sitting to the right of me, was, was a, a past educator and but she is up in lower, lower Westchester. So you're going into Ardsley, et cetera. All of the schools, I guess, got together and they were, I guess, the school boards. That's another one. School boards. They can all communicated within themselves and made sure that this particular critical race theory was not going to be in any of their curriculums. And I found that as a ray of hope. So we need to find, we need to find a way to open up the lines of communication, to understand how we are to move forward and protecting our children. And what is a, what things need to be in there and what they aren't. And hearing from the parents in the P T A and the, et cetera, that's going to be one thing. Hearing from the principals is another. Hearing from C E C eleven is another. From, from the superintendent is another. From the Board of Education Chancellor is another. One of the goals I would like for this committee is to gather data and to gather information. Um, and get people to our meetings. They could be guests and I spoke, we had our fall festival on October twenty-third. I spoke to quite a few mothers and Charlene, you were there also listening. A lot of mothers are, don't know what to do. They're very concerned. Um, they need to be a part of this meeting. So maybe our information needs to get out to the parent coordinators, the P T As. Tell them to come to the meetings. Let's hear what, what they are finding out what's going on. And I feel as if we're sort of like the roving reporters. We, we need to like get all this information together and we need to um, take things from there and um, have a push in the right direction. So I don't know if everybody is in agreement with that. I'd like to just hear some feedback. So feel free to jump in.
I think it's important.
Okay, one at a time. Okay, Tish, you go first.
I think it's important to hear from the parents. We need to know what their kids are learning in school. I know, you know, I'm a Catholic school teacher. We don't teach critical race theory. I'm not sure any schools in the Bronx are actually teaching it. That's more of a college level course. So I'd like to know what, if they are doing it or not. As far as I know, none of the schools in our community are teaching that. But, but are they teaching?
Yeah, I'd like to verify that because from you listening with the Board of Education, they are showing the curriculums that are starting as early as first grade, second grade, which is, I just find appalling.
Yeah.
Uh, Natalie, you wanted to say something? Charlene, you'll be next.
Okay.
Natalie?
Oh, sorry. I, I missed it. Um, my connection was being dropped. Um, I mean, I think some of the things that you bring up, um, I, I agree with. We should be uh, hearing definitely from all of the leadership um, in our community, um, in all of the schools. Um, I, I think what Tish said is correct, that critical race theory is a higher level course and not something necessarily being taught in our schools, but I am not against having a more inclusive and um, accurate uh, uh, teaching in our curriculum of what the American history is and, and uh, quite honestly, I'm not opposed to critical race theory and think, you know, thinking critically about the role of race in the way that um, we have disparities in our education system. And so I would be curious to know what, you know, what the literature, what is being taught, what is in the curriculums and um, where we can come to uh, a full understanding because I think there's misconceptions out there as to what it is that, that um, it's being fought for in, in our system, in our education system.
Okay. Um, there's a, I, I have, I have seen um, examples uh, from teachers, not necessarily within our, that's why I'm very curious also, you know, what is actually being taught to our kids? Is this part of their curriculum? Is the Board of Education with the Chancellor pushing this? Um, and how are they, how are they? How are they? I would like to see examples of what, of what they're doing, just to put any misconceptions at rest. Um, and, and I think instead, so that there's not any misinformation going out there. So I think a lot of what, hopefully we will be able to gather all of that and um, see what their goals are. See what their goals are for the future.
I would like to see their curriculum period. I would really interested to see what the public schools are teaching. I know what my curriculum is. I know my students' test grades go up every year. So even with uh, the pandemic, we just got our reports back. We gave our testing last year during the pandemic and our students all excelled. So I, I'm curious to see the public school curriculum.
Yes. Yes, I agree. I, I, I was also, uh, my years and, uh, and my son also was also um, in the Catholic school system. So uh, but most of my friends went to public school. So uh, but we were all, I don't know, we were all in parallel. We were all being taught this uh, very, very similar things. There wasn't that much difference. So uh, but things are different now and I think there needs to be a clarity, et cetera. Um, Charlene?
Yes, um, well, I will, will tell you um, my experience and I won't say the school that my grandson, who's a kindergartner, is in. But I did go to, they have like a family chat. And um, that meeting was held via Zoom and I asked two questions. I asked, do you um, state the pledge of allegiance in school? And the principal kind of chortled and just kind of very dismissively told me that, oh, that hasn't been done in, in public schools or in the schools for decades. Absolutely. And then I did ask the question about critical race theory and her response was, yes, it is a part of the curriculum and that if I wanted to know more about how critical race theory is used in the curriculum, that I should go to the New York State Department of Education website and look that up. And so I think I was not surprised because I have heard in different places that it's being done. And yes, it would be very different if it were just at the college level, but unfortunately it's not only at the college level. Um, and I'm sure that could be demonstrated and the issue is, is um, is, is it's critical race theory and its historical relationship to Marxism. And then secondly, it's also about age appropriateness. And you know, uh, in my career, we spend a lot of time really drilling down on patients and their rights to privacy and the necessity when you're working with children of having informed consent from their parents before you engage in any type of treatment or work that involves assessing a child's inner feeling, psychological life. And a lot of the, for the young kids, the critical race theory is woven into what they call the socio-emotional learning. And you know, I've had kids that I have worked with in my practice that have had like very strong emotional reactions to these types of questions being asked of them. So there's a lot, I think, to be learned about how it's being used. That it's being used. And I do, there should be transparency and parents should, should know about it.
Yes, I, and I don't know if everybody is in agreement, but I do feel that parents do have a say into what they want their children to be taught. So I know there was controversy also with the school boards basically saying that, no, that they don't have a say in that. And I am, I, I don't know how everybody feels about that, but I do know from my opinion that, at being a mother myself, that when my child is in school, I want to know what they're being taught. I do. The age appropriateness in elementary school is so critical. Um, and you don't want any child, especially your own, exploited. Or um, I don't know. It's just, i- i- it's, it's just age appropriate. So, so, so important.
Yeah.
I, I, I do feel.
I think it's difficult because it's about um, like at certain ages, children are very, very vulnerable and they're still laying down a basic awareness of who they are as people. And they have a right to discover for themselves in the course of their development. No one has a right to impose certain ideas on a child. So.
I agree.
Not sure what's happening, but I do, and for me as a, in this case, it was as a grandma sitting in on the meeting. So that's why I don't say the school where I learned this because my son is very strong about me staying in grandma's role. Anything that I say or do I have to clear with him before. But it was worrying me because I want my grandson to learn about who he is from, from home first.
Yes.
And then it expands from there.
You know, so it's, I, I, I hope that within this committee that we can um, explore all of the corners of what's out there. Uh, I think that we are all on a journey to not just push our own opinion, but to basically have open minds. And um, also protective, protective borders and guidelines when it comes to elementary school. So uh, I think we all, we all, whether you have children or not, if you care about your fut- the future of our um, our future, it's like, you want them to be able to be aware of so many things, but you, like every child, I don't care how much of a free spirit they are. Children need structure. And that, that, that was something that was pounded into me. So, you know, so much when I was working with my child and the developmental ages, what's age appropriate? What should I be expecting? Um, when to step back? When to, you know, it's all of these things that if you're a teacher, you're in that same role and you need to know that. You need to know how to deal with each one of your children that come to you with all the different levels of questions, et cetera. So um, it is a skill that does get learned. And um, when you understand the developmental stages of children, you understand. That's why there's elementary, middle school, high school, you know? Each one has their own um, set of perimeters. So. But yes, I, I just, I think there needs to be a lot of information, data. Um, I really do hope that we can bring a lot of that in this uh, you know, in this meeting. So what I ask from everybody is to do as much homework as you can um, on your own time and any information that you feel is committee worthy, uh, feel free to send, you know, email with everybody else's email saying, this is something that I've just learned about, et cetera. I'd like to really share it with the, of the committee members. Um, and maybe discuss it at our next meeting and to put it on the list of things or, you know, keep it in your own notes and bring it up at the next committee, uh, committee meeting. Uh, you had almost like a classroom. So uh, and I, I do hope that, that I'm able to get as many of the uh, guest speakers that are key guest speakers in each one of our monthly meetings. So that is, is one of my goals. Uh, and, and the one thing, I don't know if everybody is on board with this, but you brought it up, Tish, because it has, it has been something that has been out there within the community. Now, just myself, I, I am a product of the Vaness community. I have been there for over five decades. So I was here, elementary school, high school, et cetera. From my particular area, which now does extend not only Vaness, but the needs of Pelham Parkway, needs of Morris Park is for over five decades, we have a community center. And I, 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 I don't know. To me, it just goes beyond like, like, that's just common sense. Um, years ago, years ago, the, the burden of that was put on the Catholic high schools that had Catholic grammar schools that had gyms, like Our Lady of Solace, St. Francis Xavier, St. Dominique's. And there would not be programs. It would all be volunteers or the nuns or the teachers. So it wasn't a community center that we all kind of know of where, hey, you've got your basketball program. It's not a Boys and Girls Club where they've got after school programs. You've got stuff for teens, you've got stuff. That abundance has never been present and, and, and I, I do hope within my lifetime that it's something that um, I don't know how, but we can get it in our, in our, even if it's one big community center, will actually fulfill three communities. Pelham Parkway, Morris Park and Vaness. I mean, my own son says, Mom, I don't, you know, I don't mind it. He says, but you know, growing up here, there was nothing for me. Right? There was nothing, there's nothing. We used to, we used to have the P A L over here at St. Dominique's. That was great. And the P A L, that was Tuesdays and Thursday nights at the, they had over one hundred teens signed up each night.
Yeah, it's important. They need someplace fun to hang out and be safe.
Yes. And, and, and of course, sports is great, but the one thing they did have at the P A L, they had other tables there with other information. So they, they really did expand it. Now, they took away the P A L. That's not even available anymore.
Yeah.
So it's like, and the one thing that maybe what we could do once we do get the principals as guest speakers is talk to them, especially like from the Vanest Academy, um, St. Francis, um, P S four eighty-one, right here in Vanest. How do we, let's get, let's get funding, get funding or let's get uh, programs there for for teens, for after school programs. We have, we have the space. Why isn't it being used?
Mm-hmm.
And what I have found out just with our own, one experience is that um, the gym over at St. Dominique's, well, P S four eighty-one, excuse me. Uh, a lot of times they, they don't want to open it up to programs because it's wear and tear. So. But uh, you know, find, we need to find a balance.
Yeah.
So we need to do something. Um, maybe as spring comes along, there could be stuff in the schoolyards that are, we, we could work on something and come up with creative ideas that the principals will feel safe with, that we can find a middle ground.
And I'm sure the. And I'm sure the YCOs would be more than happy to do it with us.
Are you talking about the uh, the NCOs?
The YCOs, the youth coordinators.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Yep. So we could, we could try to really work on developing um, stuff in our own front yard, which would be great and opening up those lines of communication. So um, but the, I don't know if anybody had a chance, uh, and I'll share it because I know Charlene, I did not send it to you. Um, did anybody get a chance to look at the the previous minutes that were from March of twenty twenty? So I will share that. Just, this happened to be an extremely productive meeting. And these particular notes were taken by Paula, which she took outrageous notes. And they do get edited by the staff once they get submitted. Um, but let me see if I could share this correctly. If not, then forgive me. Um, I think that might be it. Yes. So this is just an example of the minutes that we had for March third, twenty twenty. It was a long meeting, but it was a very good one. So you can see the people that were present. Uh, one of the board members was excused, and these were the guests that we had. We had quite a few guests. And uh, we did speak about the Yankee Award Memorandum because it was changed over the years. Um, uh, but it, the one that we do have now uh, was also last year, and I think it, I think it will. It is um, it's it, it's in a very good place at this point. Uh, so we always talk about the Yankee Awards. And then we did have the guest speaker from the New York Public Library, which was Ben Sapedin. And he was from the Morris Park Library. We've also had Dawn Holloway, who's also another, I think the director at the Morris Park Library at different uh, different times. Um, they were basically talking about what was available and other information. And then what you see is for number three, we had the discussion about PS one oh eight. And uh, again, it was unclear about the purpose of the extension. Parents wanted to know what it would look like. Ideally, they wanted it catered to middle school students. And there was a petition that one of the parents, Vinnie Marie, had gotten from all of a good majority of the parents uh, that were in favor of this. But again, the principal was not in favor of it. Um, and also I think at the last meeting, what they did, what was said to the parents was that there's no need for community input or parent. I I I I was flabbergasted. So we 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 need to get an update on that. Um, this was also, somebody else was there for our Caregivers Outreach Mentorship Empowerment. This was a program. Uh, and as we see, it was operated out of PS eighty-three on weekdays and the Morris Park Library on Saturdays. Currently, it's transitioning to a new location in Co-op City. Um, I'd like to follow up on some of these items. Uh, the Summer Youth Employment Program is always something we speak about and we make sure we get it out to all of the people in the community and answer any questions. And if we don't have the answers, find out the answers. And uh, some of the old business, which was connecting with C E C eleven. Uh, she was working on some items. And also uh, uh, the PS one oh eight, that this is Vinnie Marie, that was the meeting that we did have with the Construction Authority and uh, the principal. So that did occur. And of course, we had some new business here. Uh, so there's a lot of things that, looking at this, these particular minutes, I must say, some of them just need some follow up, which I will work on. Um, I will work on seeing what information we could bring to our committee to follow up on some of these items. Okay. And you have to forgive me because right now I'm trying to find out how to unshare. Where did you go? Excuse me. Okay. Ah. Okay, I'm going to unshare this. I I I have to apologize. I do not, I am not good with WebEx, as you can tell. So. Uh, okay. I'm trying to get our full meeting back. Okay. Uh, I'm unclear. Is my, is my screen still shared?
Yes.
It's, okay, I'm trying to unshare it.
There should be something that says stop share.
Exactly. Thank you. Right? And I'm like, this is WebEx. I'm I I am not a fan. I am not a fan of it.
Is it at the bottom, that icon that says share?
Yeah, I would check that.
I know, I cannot get, because I shared it.
Yeah.
Okay, let me see. Okay, here we go. Okay. Okay. Cancel. Okay, are we back? Is it still being shared by everybody?
No, now you have your screen.
Okay, so we're back to our screens.
Close that red, looks like there's a red X there. Maybe if you click on that, it will close it.
No, that's actually leaving the meeting. That's ending the meeting. So.
When you just went up here somewhere, it said stop share. Right there, you see that red? Stop sharing?
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Ah. I really like in-person meetings. So, okay, um, at this point, at this point, uh, we've talked about our goals. I think it would be good, as Charlene said, to actually come up with what our goals are, what this, what this committee needs to do. That I could definitely put together and um, maybe in our minutes, have that be a part of it.
Is there some place, Bernadette, where it actually says, okay, the educate, the culture, education and this committee, this is the scope of the committee and this is what it, you know, what its role is?
I'm trying to think of the, yeah, I'm trying to think on the Bronx, uh, on the Bronx Community Board eleven. Uh, I don't know if each um, if there is a scope for each committee. That would be a really good point to have up there so people have an idea of the scope.
Yeah, I don't think any committee uh, is actually descriptive. Yeah.
Yeah, I I don't think so either. And I was actually just all over uh, the Community Board eleven website because I, you know, I hadn't had a chance to go back to see, well, I I know that we had other minutes. I I was there, so I know. Um, but but Jeremy and I went back, uh, and, you know, and I was like, so I was all over the website and I did not see, I don't think, I saw the uh, committee, the board members, board members by committee, um, the calendar, the agendas. And the agendas do have the previous minutes, minutes link, which is very helpful.
Mm hmm.
Because then you can go back to the previous minutes. Uh, and if you did not get them handed out to you or given out by email, you can actually go there and review them. So that's a very good link to have and I'm I'm happy when everything is all in one place, you know? But the agenda has the link, the previous minutes, but there is no scope. So that would be a, I think that would be a very good thing for each committee to submit for Jeremy to put on the website. So thank you.
I think so, only because when when members of the community are trying to understand, you know, how the community board works and how it works, especially the Education Committee via C E C eleven and the individual school and da, 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 da. It might give clarity so that like people know, is it just advocacy? Is it, you know, drafting policy, you know, it's just not clear. And then when you are meeting with other people and sitting with them and hearing from principals or C E C eleven, then you're listening, but I think also asking questions with a mind of fulfilling whatever the mission for this committee is for C B eleven.
Okay, very good. I will, I will definitely suggest that to Jeremy. But and um, put in a scope of.
Bernadette?
Yes.
Um, I just share on the chat, like the governance page on our website, our bylaws has a very brief description of what each committee is supposed to stand for. Um, and so if you, and then there's also a PDF there um, that explains, uh, it's called the Handbook for Community Board Members. Um, and that kind of breaks down what the role of the community board is, et cetera, et cetera, for people who want to understand more about it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. It's um, a lot of times people, what we, I usually encourage in our meetings is for people to come to your local meetings. Even if it, you know, your community board meetings to see how they operate, your local organizations, your, your, for us, it's the forty-nine precinct council meetings, just to get a sense of a bigger picture. And what's great about the full, the full board meeting is that you hear from each neighborhood what's going on and not, you know, you hear from things that are happening within the committees and with the different neighborhoods there. But you get a chance to um, you get a chance to understand the different, the different, the board members that are there advocating for their neighborhoods. So uh, it gives you a bigger picture and also how, you know, the forty-nine precinct committee council, they they run their meetings differently. The full board meeting runs their meetings like most, most of the other board, you know, the other community boards are because it's Robert Rules of Orders as foundational and each one, they get customized. So, but thank you. I'll definitely, you know, please, everybody, you should copy and paste that from the chat room. So um, I also put that, so I will be able to actually have that in the, in the minutes too. So Natalie, let me ask you something. Um, as a, as a young mother, is this your first child?
Yes, it is.
It is. So, so you're a new mom, right?
Yeah. Love it.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a great experience, you know? Not only childbirth, but for the rest of the life, for the whole, their whole developmental ages. Um, I I'm really glad to have a different perspective. So I'm 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 glad that you're interested in uh, in this because as a new mom, this should be something that is on your radar.
It definitely is.
Yeah, so any information, like I said, with the rest of any information that any of us just gather, any data, uh, please keep it somewhere and so we could share it with ourselves and actually be a committee that advocates, but also is able to give current information. I just think that is, um, I think that's what a lot of people, I, that's what I'm craving. Clarity, um, you know, and um, transparency, uh, so that people could make their own judgments, you know, as a, as a parent. So. Okay. I'm just looking on my list over here. I, the next thing that's going to come in your emails uh, for the committee uh, will be after both Jeremy and myself just review all of the, we have six submissions for the Yankee, the Yankee, Youth Yankee Leadership Awards nominees. Um, one of the rules is that uh, the only people that can vote, and we do have to have a quorum. Does, is everybody aware of what a quorum is?
More than half the committee members?
One more than half.
One more than half.
Yeah, so it's a majority. It's one more.
And how many of us are on this committee?
Well, I know that there, I thought we had six people. Right now, um, there are, out of the six people that were on, there are only two. And Patty the Jesus, you are, you are, you're, you're basically not on the committee yet. Am I correct, Patty?
Right.
Patty, so she's sitting in and 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 um, taking in information and in listening. So.
I nominated two of the kids, so I have to recuse myself from?
When we vote on it. Yes, I I have, we also, Van Ness Neighborhood Alliance also has one.
Okay.
So, yeah, and um, yes, so when it, when it is voted on, if we accept this, this one as a, as a nominee, um, we have six right now and there are five slots. So five nominees that are chosen. So yes, you do have to, you have to sit back. You can answer questions if questions are asked.
Okay.
Okay, you cannot offer any info, any information, but you can ask. You can answer if there is a question. So that, that, I made that, I made, wanted to make that clear for myself too. Because that's something new that happened over the last really two, two or three years.
Mm hmm.
So um, so we do have six nominees and those will be coming to the mem, the board members. Uh, so at our next meeting, which um, usually we have our meetings on the first Tuesday of the month. Is everybody, everybody okay with that? So many?
I actually have another meeting the first Tuesday of every month.
Okay, so.
Because I'm also a member of AIM.
Oh, yes.
Our meeting's the first Tuesday of every month.
Okay, so I will um, check with Jeremy. I do not have any problems with having it on the first Wednesday of the month. So Natalie, how are you with that?
Um, that works for me.
Works for you. Okay, um, and and Patty, I don't know if if you're going to come back to us, but if you are, is Wednesday work with you? Okay. You can add, you can text me on another point. Pat, I see you, Patty. Okay, um, I will, I will find, I will find. Oh, I can't hear you. Hello? Okay, Patty. I'm not able to hear you, but whenever you you can unmute yourself if you want to speak, please do. Um, I will ask the other committee members also if we could work that out. Um, since everything is remote at this point, we don't have to worry about the uh, different meetings on the same day. So um, I'm trying to think, I think that's, I've covered almost everything. I'd like to open it up and see if there's anything else that I might have missed that you'd like to speak about. I'll open it up tis, Natalie.
No, I think the only, go ahead, I'm sorry, Natalie.
Okay, um, I have one quick question. Do we have, do you know if we have any um, document that or data on all the schools and the breakdown of what they are in our districts?
Actually, um, Diane Norris had that. Uh, I am in the process of speaking with her, emailing her son and seeing there are a lot of notes, but I am sure I can get that information. I would like to get it from somebody who's already put a lot of stuff together, but if I'll simultaneously speak to um, Jeremy and the other uh, other resources that I could do that. Yeah, I'm, I'm very curious.
I know city planning keeps um, track of all the public schools. But but I'm also like curious of charters and um, and parochial schools that are in our district as well.
Of course, of course. And our district right now, which we're gonna do is um, is Community Board eleven. And then I could also, I would be curious to know what C E C eleven has with that information, so I'm actually gonna speak with them, see if I could get a fuller account. Yeah, that's something that's uh, you know, that uh, kind of foundational. Okay, thank you. Um, and if anybody else, uh, feel free, if anybody finds any information, please send it to me. Uh, and what we could do is, you know, start putting together all the information that we uh, gather within our own research. Okay, so that, that would be very helpful. I, I'd like to see, I mean, yes, I am the chair, but I am a big um, I am a big uh, team player. So I've always been, in my work with advertising agencies, we always had teams working on projects. And the end result was always uh, better than expected. So I'd like to see us as a team. So if there's any information that could be collected, please uh, share it with everybody. Or if you want to just send it to me, I don't really care, it's your choice. But you know, um, the more, the more that we do our homework, the faster we can get to our goals. So that is uh, important. And this is also a forum too, to bring up any other items that we feel are in question. Any other guest speakers, any other things that we need to do research on, so. Um, uh, Patty, if you're, if you want to unmute yourself, if there's anything else that you would, you know, like to add to this, uh, feel free. And if not, Charlene?
Oh, the only thing that, oh, maybe Patty is.
Hi Patty, I didn't hear anything. Oh, she just got bumped off. She probably got, uh, she probably got bumped off with her Wi-Fi. Go ahead, Charlene.
The only thing like, I, I do think setting goals, that those things are important so that, you know, there can, you can track your progress. Because I know you mentioned one um, that seemed very important to your committee. And that would be having um, you know, like a um, community center. And something like that is probably several different, you know, sub-goals and then actions that have to be um, followed to move it from a goal to actually coming to fruition. So I don't know, I think if you have specific goals that you want to achieve, it would be really nice to know those goals and to have a way of tracking progress. And then as you have said, you wanna have it function like a team. So then that way, different tasks can be delegated and you can follow and we can move forward or get things that the community needs in an effective way with regard to education.
Okay, yes, um, and things that the goals and the, the, the things that we discussed here, I will work on putting together with minutes because I will review it. Um, and then next, next time we have our meeting, that we could um, have the next person do that same thing. Take down their notes like I've taken down the notes. And also you could review it and enhance your notes, be more inclusive. So um, whatever the minutes are, uh, I will hand out to our committee people first and then get your feedback. There are things that I might have missed, there are things that um, you know, could be interpreted differently. So I'm open for making things as clear as concise as possible. So um, that will be my, that will be my next step is to get the minutes out. And for those who are here presently at the meeting, which is Natalie and Tis, since you are the two people that are on, you know, the committee, uh, just give me your feedback and then we will have, that will be the first draft. And then there will be final. And Charlene, since you're my vice president, I will make sure that you see them too.
Oh, my gosh.
Add it to your list.
Okay, I don't even have anything to say because I know they're gonna be accurate.
Well, I, I, I will welcome your feedback.
You said it, not me, Bernadette.
Okay, that's, I'm, I, I am, I mean it. Okay, I want our community center.
I know, that's a, we, we have a new mayor now that, you know, just the way that you worked diligently on the park for Van Ness. It's like, it's putting on that scale.
But it's like, my point is, what, I guess what question for me is, when I look at this goal, what's the most effective first place to start? I, I really, I have to say I've given up on the elected officials. Because I think that they could be a part of it, but none of them, they will, they will voice this that, yes, we do need a community center, but I don't see any action now. I mean, I do know city planning, so I feel that maybe I might make a few phone calls. If I, i- if we could find out the most effective first base, first place that, you know, we could, how, how do we, how do we go about? Years ago, when I was asked this question, the first thing that came out of actually city planning, the, et cetera, is well, what, what about your location? Do you have any locations? Well, you know, we've got a lot of locations right now. We have, well, where they want to put, they want to put the new homeless shelter. That was the old bingo hall and the pool, the pool hall. That would be a perfect place in walking distance, both Van Ness, Mars Park and Pelham Park, it would be perfect. We also have the um, the bowling lanes, okay? I've already put out to the property owner, uh, Mr. Pestone, if he wanted to have such a legacy in, in our community is to really have that be a community center. I put that out last year, last, in twenty twenty, I think, in the summer. I, I made a wonderful letter, but I didn't get any feedback, so I think I'm going to have to visit, revisit in person.
The Van Ness lanes closed?
Oh, yes.
I didn't know that.
That, uh, that, my, my third cousin is, is the business owner, Jimmy Farago. And that was brought down from his father, Charles Farago. So this is like, this has been here for over, over six, six decades.
Yeah, my school, uh, we had our bo, bowling league that bowled there.
I was in the league there too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they, they had it, their, their calendar was jam packed with all the leagues.
Samantha had her tenth birthday party there.
Yeah, I had, yeah, bowling parties. Yeah, it's, it's like, I mean, it's been in four different or three movies because it's so, he never put money into, he kept it the way it was in the seventies and sixties.
Yeah.
You had to use your brain to write things down, my math, which I thought was great.
Yeah.
You know, for the score.
Yeah.
Uh, but yeah, and now right across from that is the, the Tribeca, Tribeca?
Triborough.
Triborough, thank you.
Triborough, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's up, that's up for release. So we've got all these locations in prime spots.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't know what to do. I don't know where to start. Hmm, I want to start everywhere.
Yeah, funds it.
Van Ness lanes would be great.
Yeah.
That would be a great location, especially because it's close to Van Ness Academy and then it's not far from P S eighty-three and Catholic schools in the area.
It's really a great location. It, it really, either one of those buildings. I mean, I think there's more square footage at the bowling lanes.
Yeah.
So um, but it doesn't have second floors or whatever, so I, I just um, I don't know where to start, but to be quite honest, if anybody has any ideas, take action with it and just, you know, fill us in, fill us in. I know for myself, um, I'm gonna speak to city planning, I'm gonna speak to Mr. Pestone, I um, uh, you know, our, our city council people, uh, I'm not gonna leave them out because we do need them. But it's like, you know, where, where do we start the group effort? Because it's not an easy process and, but look what they did up in uh, in um, in the Niter buildings with the uh, the Y M C A there. That was in planning for many years. The mayor did that, so. Come on, we, we need this. This is, this is not just one person.
Well, I think with all of the parents in the neighborhood, if, if you had a plan and that Van Ness lane sounds great, but if, if you, um, if the research can be done to show, for example, like why do you want this? How is this going to help? Like even some programs, um, you know, they were like, some research that I did, we were able to show um, after nine eleven that um, the, the kids that were exposed to this particular mental health program that we developed actually did better. That means their attendance improved, grades improved, um, referrals to um, for disciplinary action, things like that. And we actually got funding from Robinhood. It was the first time they funded mental health because we were able to show that it actually resulted in improved educational outcomes. So maybe like something like that, that would show, okay, um, communities that have these well-run centers, their, their kids um, are less involved with the police or whatever. But maybe we can put some thought into that and see if, if there's a solid idea that's planned out, then we can engage parents because I think every parent, especially the parents of um, you know, adolescents where it gets, they get.
Yes, the teenagers, yep.
I wish, I think the parents themselves could advocate for it also. And that might be a way to um, encourage the politicians to be more responsive.
Yes, and, and, and even if we, yes. But the examples would also to be where the other boys and girls clubs are. And um, get data also from surrounding areas of how they're doing or how the children are doing, uh, get some sort of data to see how it does improve. Um, everything from, from responsibility, you know, after school, you know, doing your homework when you get there, um, uh, having an outlet for recreation, having a, uh, maybe some mentorship there, uh, which that is such a huge thing, uh, whether it be for reading skills or um, talking about going to high school. You know, so many, there's, there, there was a program years ago in Manhattan, it was called The Door. Uh, well, I was actually a gymnastics coach there, um, and I got, uh, for, for quite a few years. We gave of our services from uh, free to, to the program, the basic program that they wanted there um, on two nights a week. And we got a chance to see how this particular program is, was a commitment. Where they came in at thirteen, they left at twenty-one. And it was a commitment that they had to, you know, be vetted for. Uh, they weren't fly-by nights, they had to do this, uh, uh, you know, they worked, the parents and the children worked together. They had job resources there, uh, summer pro, job resources for the children. They had capuero, they had gymnastics, they had, you know, it was just, just a wonderful program. And it was for the surrounding communities and I guess, um, I don't know exactly if it went out beyond that. But Paul Newman was a private, was a private owner. Uh, he, I think he had either fifty percent of it or whatever. Uh, and then there was also other, other, um, you know, um, owners. But it was such, it was such a foundational, great program. I would, my gosh, I would love to see something like that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, uh, just, I am sure it would be flooded, flooded with eight kids of all age groups. Just to give them something, to, to give them, to, to say, I care enough about you that we've done this for you. You know, so like I said, this is something that um, if we only accomplish one thing from this committee, that would be.
It'd be it, yeah.
That would be such a wonderful, I, I, I could die as, I could die then, okay? This is, that's just been.
Well, we don't want that.
My mother used to always say, like, when she got to like something that she always wants, she goes, okay, now I could die.
Now I could die, yeah.
Peacefully. So, well, everybody, I'm looking at the time, it's eight forty-eight. Um, if there's anything, anything else uh, that you would like to give Tis, if there's.
No, I think we've covered everything.
Hey Natalie? Is there anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay, very good. Um, Charlene, you okay?
I'm fine. It looks like a lot of work to be done.
Yeah, so we have to organize it and take and glorify the baby steps, so. And you know what, if we want to do it, we could do it.
Yeah.
And have everything, open heart and open mind.
Yeah, it's just putting in the hours.
Yeah, like, like we don't have anything else to do with our lives, right? So um, without further ado, I would like to say that it is now uh, eight forty-nine. And before we adjourn the meeting, I just want to thank everybody for your participation. I want to thank everybody for your love and concern for our community and for our children. And uh, let's move forward. And so I'd like somebody to second that we adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Tis. So I'm gonna call this meeting to an end at eight forty-nine. I just want to thank everybody.
Yes, thank you, Natalie, everybody that are on the, are committee members for volunteering your time.
Thank you, thank you so much. And I will let everybody know also, if we are gonna have it on a Wednesday, we will get that information out.
Okay, great.
Okay, good night, everybody.
Good night.